Well, good evening everyone and welcome to our study session. Tonight on our first on our agenda is a report by Chief of Police Department, Chief Patrick Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm the new guy in the room, Chief Patrick Smith, just taking over as Chief of Police for the City of Lakewood. Today I'll be going over the Lakewood Police Department's 2022 annual report. I know that each of you already have a copy and have had an opportunity to review the report. So I will proceed to page four of the report, just to go over some of the highlights of the police report. Since the formation of the city in 2004, I'm sorry, the police department in 2004, total crime has flattened out in 2019. As you can see from the chart and graph at the bottom, you'll see the a steady, steady decrease in crime from 2016 to 2019. And from 2019 to 2022, there, there has been a slight steady increase in crime within the city. As a year-over-year date, we show approximately 1.9% increase in overall crime in the city of Lakewood. As far as our total calls for service, they remain flat as far as service calls, but there's been a significant decrease in overall calls for service that are dispatched through our officers, which means that there is an increase in our officers initiated or self-initiated activity. The top categories have been our welfare checks. So our welfare checks primarily consist of several things. They can be checks on an elderly person, someone with mental illness, or someone who has been, has had an overdose or something of that nature. Our officers have been trained with Narcan so that they know how to treat those who have been involved or had some form of difficulty as it relates to narcotics. Our welfare checks account for 37% of our overall crime or calls for service. Our suspicious persons or suspicious vehicles account for 24%, while our unwanted persons and our domestic violence, when you combine the two, unwanted persons account for 18%, while domestic violence accounts for 21%, for a total of 39%. Usually those things are pretty much closely related. Our crime rate is divided into three general areas. There's crimes against person, crimes against property, as well as societal crimes. Our, our neighbors is if you take a look at our property crimes first from 2016 to 2019, on the chart, it will show a steady decrease in crime. However, our property crime has increased by 6.4% overall in our year-over-year numbers. And typically we review crime from year-over-year from 2021 to 2022, which shows our difference in overall crime rate from, from that time period. Our crimes against persons has been kind of mixed since 2016. It's gone up and down in 2019 to 2020. But our year-over-year numbers from 2021 to 2022, we're showing an 8.2% decrease in overall crime against persons. Our societal crimes have, has, have shown the greatest success. Overall, from 2016 to 2022, you can see from the chart, a steady decrease in overall crime within the city as far as societal crimes. Our year-over-year numbers from 2021 to 2022, we show a 17.3, 17.13% decrease in, in overall societal crimes. In addition to our traffic collisions or traffic accidents within the city, we also show a 6.8% decrease overall. There are several other highlights that I wanted to point out, and that is our marine services. Our marine services unit, their, their total officers on the water hours was 360. The total citations and warning was 432, and the total written vessel inspections was 283. Searches and rescue were, there were three of them. Also, the other part would be our animal control, which is at the bottom of the same page. We received 1,765 service requests, 236 impounds, 335 citations, and eight potential dangerous dogs removed. One of the, the greatest parts that I've noticed about the police department and being here is the fact that that tremendous pride is taken in training the officers to prepare them for the various things that happen within the community, making sure that they're up to speed on the various changes in laws. In addition to making sure that, that each officer is meeting the guidelines as far as the legislation updates, in addition to our mandates for training. Total training hours is 24,976, and the average training hours per officer is 217. The other part I wanted to point out is use of force. Use of force is always a consideration as, as officers work and go about their duties. The department takes great pride in minimizing force, using the appropriate levels when needed, and making de-escalation one of the cornerstones of what we do. If you look, there's been a steady decrease in use of force since 2019. 2019, you would see a spike, and that is usually around the time of COVID, when everyone was in, and also the influence of the incident regarding George Floyd. Next, just briefly, I wanted to go over the pursuits. There were 30 pursuits in 2022. Of those four were terminated by the Lakewood Police Supervision. Of those 17 were related to DUI. Others related to property crime, and the other 12 were related to crimes, felony persons crimes. And the last thing that I will go over is just really briefly, the number of officers who were recognized by the department. Five of whom were given a Medal of Valor, two for a Medal for Meritorious Service, seven life-saving, and also three police chief commendations. There are, overall, the report shows that the department is working exceptionally hard to meet the needs of the city and the services, service requests by each citizen. We continue, as I take over as Chief of Police, we will continue to hold great pride within the, in the service, service sector and recognizing that we are here to serve the citizens and provide the best quality possible service that we can. It's my goal to, as Chief of Police, to still uphold the same values, uphold the same expectations, and making sure that our officers provide good quality service to the citizens that they come in contact with. If you have any questions at this time, I will be glad to address.
Are there any questions? Mr. Ben Stiller.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Chief, glad to have you here, and I guess that I would like to say that I do like the format of the slides that you presented to us today. They're not overly crowded with numbers and, and things, and they, and they, they are, they're understandable, and I in terms of depicting something that is heavily related to statistics in a, in a way that is, communicates a message is, is, is a real plus. I, with regards to the, and I realize it's short-term, but regarding the 2019 to 2022 crime increase, that, and, and I realize the numbers are based on the number of crimes that we've entered into the system, with our reports and that to do that. But is, do the numbers, the, the trends of increases, or in the cases where there were decreases, also reflect the number of identified offenders, or are they, and so even though crimes have gone up, have we also been catching more people who have been committing crimes, or is?
So one, one thing I'll point, put out is on page five. If you look at the chart, the upward chart, and right in the center, right about here, the yellow line going across. This shows, this chart shows the number of arrests that were made starting in 2016, and it goes all the way to 2022. You'll see that in 2016, there were 2,426 arrests, and over time, there's been a steady decline. If you look, there's been a steep drop off from 2019 forward. And that kind of goes along with the upward chart, which talks about the calls for service. In addition to seeing the significant drop off here from the, the various calls for service that, that are rendered. But I would tell you that that shows a different, significant decline in the number of arrests that are made. Part of this is the changes in the laws where officers can no longer pursue offenders who have committed some type of crime. In Lakewood, we did not have the same issue, or so the same crime, the same patterns as it relates to pursuits that other areas did. There were already good policies and procedures in place, and from what I saw, the crime patterns and trends were just on track with the number of arrests. However, as, as we look at the, the numbers, there was a tremendous spike in the number of lewds that we have, and that's folks who just continued to drive when officers were directly behind them. So this shows a significant impact on our ability to make arrests when, when appropriate.
Well, you know, we had an understanding that that was one of the cause of things that was influencing the department the last couple of years. And we've been active with trying to influence our legislators in Olympia where those changes were, were made to, to make some changes. And it remains to be seen what exactly they do this legislative session. But we are also a legislative body. Is there something that comes to mind that at our level we could do that would help do that? Because I think while citizenry might understand some reason why a lower percentage of crimes are being resolved with an arrest, that that doesn't necessarily go down real well. And, and, and so is there something that we as a, as a city council could do at, at this level that you think would be beneficial in influencing that?
Absolutely. So there are several things that we as the police department are working on. Number one, additional training for the officers so that our, our goal is to remove as many stolen vehicles off the streets as we possibly can. Even if we don't have the offender, but just knowing where, where the vehicles are and taking them off the street so that they are not used in the furtherance of other crimes. The helpful part for us is obtaining new forms of technology that will help us to track the stolen vehicles within the city so that we know when they enter our city and we know when they leave our city. We know where they are within our city and also provide various alerts to our officers as they travel through various checkpoints within our city.
With respect to welfare checks, and that, that's the most common dispatched call for service that we, that, that, that we've experienced, and that's, but what is the, what are the most common resolutions of welfare checks?
So welfare checks can range from a number of things. Being, it could be an elderly person whose family lives a distance away, and they just have not been able to get ahold of them, and officers would do a welfare check as far as that is concerned. Or someone who has some form of mental illness and family members want a welfare check on them. And then sometimes what we've seen is a number of people who may have had an overdose, and our officers respond and end up administering Narcan to try to help facilitate and to bring them back. And so it could be a number of reasons for a welfare check. I've gone on many of them in, in my police career, and so oftentimes it can be a mixed bag.
So that, what kind of feedback is given to the requester after a welfare check? If it, if it comes through a 911 call and, and, and our officer is dispatched, do, is there a loop that is closed to the requester?
Oh, absolutely. The loop should be closed with the, with the person who called and the information as it relates to the welfare check so that they know exactly what's going on and, and/or notifications made to the family.
And I, I'll just comment on, on animal control, which is, you have a couple of people that involve for that, but it's something that is a, I get periodic phone calls about that. And that generally the calls are not about dangerous dogs or, or even about barking dogs. It's about people who are out and about and encounter unleashed dogs, whether it be in parks or in neighborhoods, being able to go and do that. And so they commonly get asked about, particularly like in the parks, why isn't there any proactive enforcement of someone who sees individuals with, with a dog or dogs that are, that are unleashed, of them being contacted by someone in, in authority, okay? And that, you know, two people responded to a lot of things on your, on your, on your chart to be able to go and do that. And they also respond to an additional number of things in Stilicum and Dupont
Yes.
to be able to go and do that. So is there, is there much room for any proactive enforcement of the city's regulations regarding animals and dogs?
The short part of that, sir, is no. There's, there's very little room for them. They're servicing the city, and so for them to be proactive, if you look at the number of calls for service, over 1,700 calls for, for service, it's very difficult for them, them to be proactively looking for dogs, not on leases, but they do write citations whenever it's, it's there with them, whenever they're on scene.
Okay. And, and, and my last question is, in your short time here, how valuable or slash effective as a tool are you finding the My Lakewood 311 reporting tool that we've provided to citizens?
You know, actually, I think it's an exceptional tool. I think that it is working exceptionally well. The community meetings that I've gone, gone to already, people have spoken very highly of the 311 system, and they have given great kudos to the city for implementing the 311 system.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for your report, and, you know, look forward for many more with graphs and all going in the right direction.
Well, hopefully we can simplify it just a little bit more in the future.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Ask my avail.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for coming. I had a question about the citizen, the Police Citizens Academy, and when that was coming back, I'm not sure if that's what the exact name is, and maybe you know, maybe you don't know. I know it's just always a great way to educate our residents on what's happening and being involved. So I was just curious if, if, if that was coming back or not.
Absolutely. I think that the Citizens Police Academy is an excellent program. It's also, it's an excellent program to engage the citizens, also to let them know what's going on in the city, and also to bridge the gap between law enforcement so that we can have some form of contact. I don't have the date for the program right now, but I can certainly get back to you.
All right. Thank you, Chief, for being here. I had a couple of questions on the charts and data that you had.
Yes.
So specifically this chart here.
Which page?
Page five that you're currently on. On the calls for service, it's showing something around 48,000 calls for service in 2022. And the lower chart on there adds up to about 10,000. I was curious, are the calls for service chart based on all Pierce County, or is it all Lakewood?
All Lakewood.
Okay. So what's the reasoning or the discrepancy between 48,000 versus 10,000?
Okay. So the, the one at the top, you're looking at the dispatch calls for service, and that, that number comes from dispatch. So I'm sorry, that was incorrect. That number comes from dispatch, so that's the calls for service from dispatch out. So that comes from Pierce County. So that numbers, and the numbers at the bottom are purely Lakewood.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's called from the total number of, of calls for service.
Got it. That makes sense. Thank you. And then the other question I had was around, let's see, what page is this? Just one second. I think it was your use of, uses of force chart.
Yes.
Where it showed it peaked in 2019. And I think you stated that it could have been related to COVID or George Floyd, but those didn't happen until 2020. Is there any other?
What page are you on, sir?
This is page 17. A little further. This chart here, yes.
So 2020, 2019, so if, while I wasn't here in 2019, if you look at even all of the other charts, 2019 and 2020 appears to be the peak number for a lot of what was happening in the city at the time. In 2019, you can see the, the base here of calls for service, 2019, 2020, here for crimes related to persons, it was up significantly. Same thing here. 2019, it started to climb back up in societal crimes. So whatever it was that was happening in 2019, I couldn't tell you. I, I initially thought that it was around, but COVID did come after that. But everything else kind of came back down after, after 2019 to 2020, 2021, and
Okay.
to where we are in 2020. I apologize. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you for, thank you for coming today and your answers.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Chief, just a question again, it might be a little too early for this, but I'm interested in the dichotomy between the property crimes, which we all know, I mean, we've almost, essentially almost legalized, or certainly the legislature has created a path forward creating auto theft as a career. But the dichotomy with that and the drop in persons crimes, which I don't know that we've seen in all the cities surrounding us. We, we've certainly heard a lot of stories about real difficulties throughout the Northwest. So any idea, I mean, 8.2% drop in persons crime is a significant drop. So I'm, I'm assuming it's in the assault areas. Any ideas behind that?
The only thing that I could see is, is probably a reduction in the ag assaults that would drive down the overall crimes against persons. There was no real breakdown as far as the I'm gonna go to where you're referring to.
That, that one right there.
Okay. Yes, this is the one that, if, if you recall, I said it was pretty much a mixed bag because it went up in 2019, back down in 2020, then up in 2021, then back down to the same level for the most part as in 2020. So with a, a month and a few days in, it's kind of difficult for me to tell you that the, the trend that was happening around this time from 2018 to 2020, the, the roller coaster ride as far as the ups and downs is in the crimes against person.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had one other question. I know in the past, Lakewood PD has had several community service officers assigned to neighborhoods.
Yes.
Is that program going to come back or grow at all?
So right now, we, we have two still operational. So right now, we we have two uh still operational. Um. They uh currently work at the desk in uh for the department. I would like to see the program come come back to life. I know that the the city budget sometimes goes up and down and and uh budgetary decisions are made, but if if we plan to make um community-based policing, you know, community-based police in a cornerstone of the police department and and how we police the city, then it would be my recommendation that we bring back the program so that uh people within the city build like it's truly their police department. They have uh someone within the community that's working with them to resolve long-term issues and critical problems within the city.
Any other questions?
Chief, I'll just have one comment. Um, you talked about trackers on stolen cars.
No, not trackers. But what I was speaking of was a license plate recognition program uh and that it would go on the various corridors within the city to um that would provide alerts to the police department when a stolen vehicle would pass certain locations so that officers were aware when if we had them at various points of entry and exit to the city, we would know when a stolen vehicle enters our city and also when one leaves our city. And when a stolen vehicle is reported right away, we're able to then put it in the system and know when that vehicle left and which direction of travel so that we can then notify the other law enforcement partners.
So if you can locate a one that's parked someplace, are you at liberty to do anything?
Yes, we can. The whole idea is if we if we recognize the area where they're being parked, then we can then add more enforcement to the area or uh the primary thing is to get those vehicles off the street so that they're not used in other crimes.
Okay, thank you. And welcome aboard. You did a good job.
Glad to be.
If there's anything we can do to help you out, just let us know.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And next, we're gonna have a review of the home and the uh ARPA funds, and with for that, we're gonna call on Program Manager Jeff Blum.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council. Um, as as you mentioned, I wanted to go through a a little bit of the application that we have received for home assistance. So Lhasa Living Access Support Alliance applied for a home assistance loan for one point one seven five million dollars in home A R P and one million dollars in home funds. So the the project that would be looking to be funded would be the Lhasa Gravely Lake Commons Project is the twenty five unit housing, twenty five unit affordable housing development project. Um, it's located on the corner of Gravely Lake, fifty ninth and Fair Lawn. So it would be directly west of the current Lhasa facilities where they operate out of their uh fifteen unit affordable housing complex and community services center. So the the funding is a couple of funding sources that I mentioned. The first would be the, I'll go through the home A R P because it's kind of a a new one-time fund. So in twenty twenty one, the city received uh just in excess of one point one seven five million in home A R P funds. Those are from the CARES Act. They were a a one-time fund that was awarded to the the city of Lakewood through the Home Consortium with the City of Tacoma. So um those funds unfortunately carry a lot of additional strings. The Home CARES Act looked to allocate those funds to kind of a little bit of a different clientele base. The the home program typically looks at a house's um overall income. So you have to be a a low-income household to well for home. The home A R P program was specifically set up to help with a a different clientele base, more of a McKinney Bento homeless clients. So the the clientele base is a little different. There's no income qualifications because if you're determined to be homeless, you're automatically low-income. So the home A R P is a little different that way. And then there was a a little bit of kind of different targeting in the different programs that you can do with the home A R P. So home A R P was was set up to develop and support affordable housing. Um, you can do tenant-based rental assistance with home A R P. It does provide for the provision of supportive services for those homeless individuals. Um, and another use would be acquisition and development of congregate shelter units. And again, it's a McKinney Bento-based clientele rather than a low-income household. And the other funding source that was recommended, or sorry, was requested was a one million dollar home allocation. So the city would be looking to use some older home funds that we have and combining them with the some of the new allocations upwards into the twenty twenty three annual action plans allocation. I think there's about four hundred thousand dollars. I forget the number off the top of my head. Should know these numbers. There's the the way that the home funds work, I guess, is to kind of go back and and describe it so that the home consortium allows the City of Lakewood to get about three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars a year in home funds. So um we we have currently about one point two million dollars. And that that does include the fiscal year twenty twenty three allocation. So we have a a little bit of some older funds that are left over. We had a repayment in twenty seventeen from some unused funds on a project um that came back. And then there are some other funds that have been sitting in there uh waiting to be allocated for twenty twenty and twenty twenty, no, sorry, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. So those funds, when they're all combined with the this upcoming allocation, there'll be about one point two million dollars in that fund. Uh, one million dollars would be requested to be allocated to the Lhasa project. So with that, um, it's not a not a lot of information. It's a fairly fairly easy request. They're looking to develop this project in the next two years. It it should be fully developed in twenty twenty five realistically, construction schedule right now. For Lhasa is working on their services center. So they're doing some improvements to the service center where they're adding laundry and and some bathroom and shower facilities right now. Once those are done, then they would presumably move to work on this next phase of the project, phase three. And so with that, does council have any questions?
Mr. Anderson?
On uh, I think it's page twenty three. There's an indication of at the the last line, there's nine hundred nine million six hundred seventy five thousand dollars is ninety two point one percent of the total budget. Is that what's included in the total budget? Which is about ten point five million dollars if those numbers are correct.
Correct. So the the total budget would be about ten point five million dollars. So the the ninety two percent would include the loss project currently has three point five million allocated from Pierce County and.
No, I'm not. And I I I guess I was other. What do you buy for that? Not where's it come from?
So the ten point five million dollars covers twenty five units of affordable housing. Units in individual buildings. There would be roughly three or four, I think it's four, um, individual buildings.
And they would be one, two, and three.
Not including land. Not including land, no.
So the true cost is about five hundred thousand dollars a year.
Actually, about six hundred thousand more. I think I think some of the land was about six hundred thousand that we put in previously.
You go over on Pacific Avenue in Tacoma, there's a brand-new eighty-unit condo apartment that's for sale for under three hundred thousand dollars a unit that has quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances, and it's already there. Why should we spend contribute to six hundred thousand dollars a unit for an inferior product when you can buy it on the open market for three hundred thousand dollars or less?
Some of that would be the development costs that are associated with federal funds. I'm getting feedback tonight. So there there's an additional cost associated with our projects, and we develop them with with federal dollars. So we have to make sure that we're paying federal prevailing wage. Um, section three is a of income requirement program where you hire or contractors hire low-income workers as part of the project. Um, it's it's unfortunately a a affordable housing project with federal funds just has more strings that none of us really like, but they do they do have to be met and they do increase the cost of the construction.
Yeah, I I I don't doubt your analysis whatsoever. Uh, but the question really is, why should you spend six hundred thousand dollars for something you buy at the open market for three hundred? And I I haven't heard a rationale from anybody on that yet.
Got it.
That's was my question.
Mr. Boki, and then Mr. Francis.
I apologize. That was my question regarding capital. What respect to operations? Do we have a budget for operations and indication where the money is going to come from to keep this going? Because we have a COVID wall coming where all this one-time money is going to be gone. There's nonprofits buying housing units everywhere. Where's the capacity going to be to sustain that? Because permanent supportive housing being the most expensive uh housing project that there is, is you're buying, essentially buying long-term housing for people and operating it. What has Lhasa developed a plan for funding the ongoing operations or this hoping for vouchers?
No, they they do have a budget. I did not include that in the pack. I can I can get that and get it to council. It was part of their their housing trust fund application. So they had a an application in the last funding round, and it did have their their performance and their operating funds as well. So I can I I can get that.
Yeah, go offhand where there comes where there would be coming from.
Um, I do not remember sources and uses. I I don't remember that.
Thank you.
Mr. Boki?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, Jeff, just a a couple of questions. So I'm looking at this ten and a half million dollar project, three and a half from the county in ARPA, one million from us in ARPA. But didn't we help them buy the property too?
Yeah, so the the property would be, there's actually three different parcels. They're going in. Maybe it's too loud. There's there's three specific parcels that are that are going into that. So we, as a city, helped um Lhasa purchase the front. As you're looking at Gravely Lake Drive and you're looking at the at the at the building itself, the service center. So there's a a house, a white house to the to the west of it. It sits on the front corner of Gravely and fifty ninth, I believe. So that that parcel was purchased for six hundred thousand dollars. That has a a three-bedroom, single-family house on it and a fairly large lot. Lhasa did purchase the the parcel directly behind that on their own. Um, neither the city or the county was involved. And then there was one parcel directly behind the Lhasa building on Lawndale that um twenty sixty funds, so the the state recording funds were used to to purchase that property. And that was about trying to remember the number. It was around three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy thousand, something along those lines.
So in, thank you for identifying two sources of funding here, but it seems like you know, the the piggy bank will be empty if we if we approve this. So going through each of the two sources, I guess the home funds first and then the home A R P. Although you do talk about the home A R P. What kinds of projects will we not be doing if with the home funds? Or would we normally be doing? Dude, is it is it common practice to put it all on one?
Well, the there's a, I guess, a couple of of thoughts. I mean, the the hard thing with the home funds that the city does receive, I mean, it's a it's a fairly small allocation. So you're looking at three, three to four hundred thousand dollars a year. So it's it's fairly hard to develop a project on our own. Uh, it does require usually Pierce County assistance and Tacoma and and some other housing trust fund. I mean, that that's kind of is the nature of the beast to develop affordable housing now. So um, going it alone is is a little harder. You have to kind of come up with a a group project that that can work. So that's kind of one of the one of the key elements. The we have and we can do our own projects, but they tend to be smaller. We've done some Habitat projects in previous years where Habitat's purchased lots. Um, and they will build single-family houses on those. So that's that's one option. Um, I I don't have any applications that I'm aware of, even in the even the next coming cycle that anybody is looking to do that. Habitat's been focused on Boat Street primarily for the last two, two and a half years. Um, they have twelve units of housing that need to be developed over the next year and a half to meet their timelines. So Habitat's kind of busy. Um, homeownership center of Tacoma did mention that they would be coming back at some point in time for some additional funds. Um, they have two lots where they could build potentially four houses. So a realistic, if if they do come in and and ask in the next year or or two years based on subsidy limits, I mean, they could realistically apply for up to six hundred thousand dollars, but no more than that. That would, is there a certain per-unit subsidy limits that that you have to meet? So and that would be a fairly large investment. That would be even more than we've spent on Habitat projects. We typically look to spend seventy five to a hundred thousand per unit for developments on on Habitat and and affordable housing development. The the other key piece is home does require, when you have funds, you have to commit them within within two years of receipt and expend them within four years. So right now, the the twenty seventeen funds that were paid back, um, it's it's a hundred and seventy thousand, this is seven hundred and thirty dollars roughly, has to be committed by this coming June thirtieth of twenty twenty three. If if we don't commit them, there's there's a one-year kind of window that that those funds could be used, but they would be used by the City of Tacoma as that lead consortium. So we would lose those funds if we don't commit them in that cycle. Um, there is a little bit of funding after that that we would have to commit by June twenty twenty four, June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, about oh, three hundred or sorry, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, and those as well, if we don't commit them in that in that June twenty twenty four cycle, they would go back to the City of Tacoma to use for that that final year. So there's a little bit, maybe say four sixty, that we need to commit within the next year, year and a half. But I I don't have any projects in the in the Hopper that people have applied for. I've had some interest, but no one's actually applied yet.
So under the home art, there's um production or preservation of affordable housing. And then there's the purchase and development of non-congregate shelter. But is so are we talking about a for number one or number four in this case? Or what's the difference between those two? Because isn't non-congregate like apartment buildings?
Yeah, non-congregate would be you're you're not sharing one large space. So you you could have a shared kitchen or a shared area, and then you would have individual bedrooms and so forth.
So how so? So how does that differ from one production or preservate, the the preservation in there of affordable housing? So
it's mostly just the the term of of somebody living in the unit. So a an affordable housing would typically be a one-year lease and a a shelter does not usually have any lease arrangements for tenants at all. It's it's kind of a first-come, first-served.
And then explain to me, because we, you know, we, I should know, right? Or I have some idea, but the actual meaning of tenant-based rental assistance. So is that just paying rent or is it paying rent utilities or is it paying partial rent or is it paying moving costs or is it paying? Any other items associated with getting into an apartment?
Yeah, well, the reason you don't know the definition is we kind of mix it up every year and kind of play on the margins of what we do. So so we have some, we have um emergency rental assistance where we help people relocate. Uh, we've got a a C D B G payments program. So they're they're kind of all kind of kind of the same, but not the same. So tenant-based rental assistance really is kind of what you were, what you're talking about. It's it's designed to pay for no more than thirty percent of a household, or sorry, a household can pay no more than thirty percent of their income for rent. So you're basically subsidizing the difference, the the seventy percent in this case. So if they for some reason, they're if they've got a thousand-dollar household income, they can pay no more than three hundred dollars for rent. So if they're renting a unit, um, you would then be subsidizing, if it's a two thousand dollar rent, you would be subsidizing seventeen hundred dollars a month for that household. It does include utilities. The the rents are based on what's called HUD, high home rent and a slow home rent. So they look at the market, figure out what an eighty percent household would be able to cover. Um, with the home A R P, it's not my favorite program, the way they limited it. They they limited it the it's not my favorite program, the way they limited it. They they limited the the tenant based rental assistance to the low home rents. Um, so individuals are are having to pay less, um, and it kind of increases the subsidy that the city would have to pay. So it's it it has, it's specifically set up to assist uh, homeless individuals. So the the clientele kind of meets the the rules and regulations. But it does make it a little bit more cumbersome for us. So if if we were to do tenant based rental assistance with that, um, we get to design how much we want to spend, what we what we would like to do as a city. I mean, it could be a dollar amount that you you could apply to in each individual across the board. You could make it um, prorated based on whatever their household income is. Um, you can subsidize the lower household incomes more than the the higher household income. So there's it it does give us a a bit of a leverage in what we want to do and some kind of leeway. So but ultimately, you'd be looking at a a typically a one year minimum um, assistance to a household. Thank you.
Mr. Fran Stater.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Mr. Gumm, um, I'm just trying to understand. So the 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 cities based on your recommendation and previous actions, the city's investment would be uh, one million dollars in ARPA funds subject to the proviso when we allocated that. Uh, hey, one million dollars in home funds. And did I understand that that would be a loan?
Yes, it would be set up. That's that would be my recommendation to set up as a twenty year deferred loan.
And in twenty fifteen, did we also do a a loan of home funds to losses for the services center?
Yes, they have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar outstanding loan.
So that, uh, and have we been helping them repay that?
No, it's it's fully deferred uh, for twenty years. So in twenty years, we will have to revisit that and either begin payments or or look for deferral. And and that would be something I would bring back to the council about a year before that to see what what you as a council want to do.
So in this additional one million dollar loan, are you recommending essentially the same terms, twenty years deferred with a mm, no interest or minimal interest? Or what is that?
The the current loan they have is a twenty year deferred zero interest. So that would be my recommendation. The HUD minimum for housing affordability on these types of loans is twenty years. So we typically set them up with a twenty year loan.
And the zero interest provision is still allowed under the home?
It is.
To be able to go and do that, that, um, and then in the 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 home ARP allocation, do I interpret your memorandum to say that those can't be authorized as a as a loan?
There is, I haven't seen anything in the rules that say you can or can't um, apply it as a loan. So I would have to say I would see if I can find something out from our HUD rep because I haven't been able to find yea or nay. So if council did want to get a loan, I I'd be more than happy to far to do a loan. I'd be more than happy to find out.
So I guess the question is, what is your recommendation with respect to granting them the money outright or doing a loan so that a group of people sitting here twenty years from now have the money to invest in 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 something else?
Yeah, my my recommendation would probably, uh, I'm more of a fan of making the home loans funds repayable just because the home program is, it's a little bit more forgiving. It has a little bit easier and a wider um, array of uses for it. The home ARP, to be real honest, is not necessarily my favorite program. There's a lot of rules, there's a lot of restrictions, there's a lot of exemptions, and it's it's, there's a lot of moving pieces for the home ARP. So to get those funds back in in finitem would would require a lot of, a lot of work on the staff's part in the future and how to use those funds again.
And in uh, speaking of the rules with the home ARP, which are somewhat listed on page twenty three, um, and you know, where there are references to them applying standards in in McKinney Vento and some other things. How do the home ARP rules fit with how Lassa currently operates in terms of selecting and serving folks? Is this going to be more restrictive than what they have done in their current fifteen units?
That's a good question. So the the loss of project, the current fifteen units is Tacoma Housing Authority managed. So Tacoma Housing Authority gets those clients into the to the complex through the the two one one system, the access, I forget what do we call two one one, the basically the Pierce County um, access for homelessness is is how they get into that system. Um, home ARP would be more restrictive. Um, by and large, the clientele base is very targeted, very specific. That's not required um, right now for the the fifteen units. The home would be very similar. Actually, the home would probably be less restrictive than what uh, they're doing right now. So the home is is more of a household income restriction. So the clientele aren't necessarily, they can be anybody who meets those requirements. Under the the home ARP, you have to be those very specific clientele to qualify. So the the home would be less restrictive and home ARP would be quite significantly more restricting.
So I'm not real familiar with the details of McKinney Vento, when it says defined its homelessness in the McKinney Vento Act. How was that differ from the generic under or generic homeless homelessness uh, that that is just frequently tossed out there as as a problem?
Yeah, I would I would have to get you the the definition. It's it's fairly, it's a little bit more broad. So there's a, there's a time component of how long you've been homeless. And there's also a a an income restriction that goes along, not necessarily a restriction, but an income level that goes along with homelessness. So you have to be I wish I could remember the McKinney Vento. I I don't work with it all that much, but I do know it's it a typical homeless person is a typical homeless person for most programs. They don't, they don't need to meet certain requirements. And the the McKinney Vento does have a a time limit. It has, you have to, I, there's a household member, either you or yourself under McKinney Vento that has to be disabled or of some form of disability. So there's there's a lot of caveats to it. Um, I would be happy to to get that and bring it back, but it's
Yeah, I guess I'd be interested is if if we include home ARP funds, which are the most restrictive about who can then be helped or or provide in the 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 benefit of it. And if we do this with your recommendation and the other funding that is envisioned, confirmed and hoped for um, is there, that would mean that these home ARP funds are about ten percent of the project budget. Um, that, um, but is that going to mean that the entire project as it is managed has to serve people that have those restrictions? Is that's the most restrictive funding? Um, or is the project better able to serve a broader spectrum of a community or more easily serve the community? If there aren't any home ARP funds at play, that will be for the next couple decades require them to 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 deal with a a more limited field of the homeless uh, folks, which seems to be a different population than the money that we were done in a previous phase of up upgrading the client services center to be able to go and do that. Most of the folks that would use the laundry showers and 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 other things would probably not be part of family units that would qualify under this home ARP restrictions.
Yeah, another good question. Um, so the the home program and the home ARP do not require all units um, to meet the most stringent requirements. So home, especially home ARP has a number of exemptions, and that's one of them. So the home ARP would only qualify um, all of its requirements upon the number of units that that one were to construct in the in that in that development. So there's only a, there's a a finite amount of money that you can put into a one bedroom or two bedroom or three bedroom house, whether it's home or CDBG or whatever you're putting into it. So you can't exceed that subsidy limit. So in this project uh, with the home ARP dollars, realistically, it would be two to three units. It would be home ARP restricted. Um, potentially, I would like to keep it if if there are home ARP dollars in this to a a lower number, just because it's it's going to be a more difficult clientele to serve. Um, that would be my recommendation. Um, the home dollars that would go into it, again, there, it's just restricted to home units. So if you're looking at a one million dollar allocation of home, you're again, you're looking at probably two or three um, home restricted units. You you can um, as a council require, you could do a hundred percent requirement of of units meet the home income clientele. Um, you can be, it's it's kind of up to the city to design. You have to meet the minimum, but you can make, um, you can exceed that. You just can't under undercut the the number. So there's, there would be about five to six units of home and home ARP units at a minimum that would be restricted. So the other twenty um, would be fairly open, the home or sorry, that ARP dollars that are in there from the county. I believe the only restriction for ARP is sixty percent of household income to qualify. There is no clientele requirement other than that, even the other twenty.
So in losses, current units where they have a relationship with the Tacoma Housing Authority that essentially funnels uh, residents into an available unit. If we, if if in you you we were to to move forward with your recommendation, uh, in order to get this process built in, and really, it's the only organization that is actively engaged in wanting to put a project in Lakewood uh, of this sort. Uh, and so there's a need, but uh, with the with the nature of some of the restrictions on some of the units based on some of our dollars or all of our dollars, um, in some way be able to say that we would be deal with families uh, whose um, have a history of of residents in Lakewood. Um, you know, yeah, would you be able to write that into the the combination of the home grant and the home loan and the um, and 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 the others in is is that doable for us to do with a percentage of units? As you talked about, by taking a look at the percentage of units that are going to be funded based on our percent of the total project budget?
Yeah, I I, they can be um, restricted. However, we chose to restrict them. So if we wanted to make all of the home units um, a previous or current Lakewood um, citizens, new residents, so they they would move in as a Lakewood citizen, we could do that. Um, there there really isn't any requirement other than fair housing law that obviously we can't, we can't um, deviate from certain things. But the the qualifications of clientele in there could be something that that the city determine. I I when I would, um, I'm trying to think of where we were at when we when we designed the home ARP um, with Tacoma, the the plan amendment went through Tacoma and we left the clientele base. For some reason, Tacoma wanted to kind of shrink it down and and focus on certain populations. And and I recommended that we leave it kind of wide open. So it does give us a a wider array of clients to serve. Lakewood has a fairly large veteran population. One of the clientele um, categories would be anybody who ha is a veteran who has um, that meets the qualification basically of the McKinney Vento homelessness could could be put into these housing units. So we could require it to be a homeless veteran, um, a a a household with a homeless veteran in the family. Um, there's, there's a number of things that that we could move forward with and restricting.
And if we, um, similar to a multifamily tax exemption where we put some restrictions on some units for someone who applies for that and is and is granted that. Uh, but then there is some some effort to track that reporting requirement, being able to go and do that is looking at it from, I'd really like to be observing um, folks that are within within Lakewood that can get on a on on a stabilization path, but remain in Lakewood, you know, that 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 sounds good to me. The 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 question is that if we wanted to do that in some percentage of units or something to do that, um, is that an onerous workload on you?
No, we we have to monitor them no matter the restrictions we put on them. So the home and the home ARP come with a minimum three year inspection of the of those units. So every three years, we have to do a full inspection, whether it be us or the city of Tacoma as lead agency. Every year, we have to go in and check income documentation. Um, we get rent rolls every year. Actually, we get rent rolls um, every quarter from the the developer to kind of see who's in those units and make sure that they qualify. Because the the home units and the home ARP units could float around. So typically, if if you're allocating them to a two bedroom unit, it's all two bedroom units that are fairly similar to it, could a could be a home unit. Um, it it makes it easier than a fixed unit. So you you can either allocate unit one oh two and one oh three as home units, or you can just say, hey, you know what? Any any two bedroom in there, as long as there's a low income household in there, those those can be our home units. So we do have to monitor that. It wouldn't be any any additional um, requirement, really, that would take us any more time than what we would already be spending.
Okay, and would that create a particularly onerous reporting requirement on the behalf of Lawson?
No, that that would be fairly fairly easy. The the hard thing that I would see would be some of the homeless clientele trying to establish. I mean, that's always the hard thing. What is what is a a homeless person? Where is their last residence? Is a a homeless person in Lakewood? Are they truly a Lakewood citizen or were they homeless in Tacoma and they moved to Lakewood now? So that that would be something that that I would say that would be the the one piece we would want to figure out if we do that.
Yeah, yeah, although you certainly a homeless family with children could would have a school district history.
Yes.
Um, to be able to go and do that. Well, you know, you know, again, I I I I'm supportive of the amounts that you are recommending, uh, because I think this is a sort of a project that we need to build in Lakewood for two reasons. One, because we need the units to serve people to be able to go and do that. And two, we need to demonstrate to the greater nonprofit community that projects like this can be successful in Lakewood. Um, and then maybe get some folks to KWI or 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 some of the others who who build these things to start looking at Lakewood locations as instead of exclusively looking at Tacoma locations. Um, because um, restricts our options, but uh, um, Lassa is sort of our our homegrown uh, uh, entity that 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 is serving us. Uh, but I would kind of like to when it comes back to to see some options about what could we I guess I'll call them strings. What strings could we put on that we we would 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 attach to specific benefits to the our community? That's all that I have, just in.
Thank you, Mr. Sal.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, just some quick questions. So the current uh, facility has fifteen units, correct? It does, yes.
And uh, they're all currently occupied. There's not a vacancy rate you can speak to.
There may be one vacant unit. I I believe that someone was moving out, but they they do. Fill up fairly quickly. So vacancy rates there is is pretty much hundred percent most.
And there's usually some sort of a waitlist for folks to get in or. Um, I know it's, you said it's managed by the Tacoma Housing Authority, right? So it's not.
Yeah, I I I don't know that there's necessarily a waitlist. I mean, there's, there's, there's more people out there that need housing than. And there's housing for especially through the two one one system, and that's where most of their their clientele come from.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
I I guess I have one last thing I wanted to update. So I I wasn't certain if council was aware that uh. Lhasa did hire a new executive director. Um, Jason Scales is the new executive director. I believe he started last Wednesday. He's right now working with um, the current executive director, and I don't know the timeframe on how long the transition will happen and and when he takes over. Fully for Lhasa. Um, but Jason Scales came from the Tacoma Community House, which runs, he was the interim director. For one of their larger scale projects. So they do. They do job training, they do skills training, they do housing, a a number of different things. So he comes from a background that's fairly similar um, to what Lhasa will be doing and what Lhasa has been doing. So I I think he'll be a a valuable asset to Lhasa. I've reached out to um, him to see if if he would like to come and have a meeting with uh, myself and and Mr. Viewer. Cause I don't believe Mr. Viewer has ever met him yet and. Kind of get a feel for where he's, where he's looking to take Lhasa, um, as well as the board kind of seeing. How things are going and and I think it's important, especially if if we're looking to allocate two million dollars, what the new executive director's thoughts are on the organization. So.
Thank you. You know, that is on our agenda for uh, our next meeting. So are there any discussions that conversation we want to have on that, Mr. Anderson?
Well, I'm not ready to move forward on this. I have more questions than answers. Uh, I I think it's it's premature and. Here's some of my concerns. We put a million dollars into uh, Perry Oaks, I think is the right name. To create some units uh, a few years ago. And we did that with the understanding that it would be transitional housing for families. Families, transitional housing, moving people through, helping them get on their feet and on. It appears to have turned into permanent housing. That's what they advertise it as now. Um, and I realize that there's more operational funding available for permanent supportive housing, but it's also more expensive. It's the most expensive element of low income housing, because you're permanently housing people with. No real program to move them on, except for. Yes, in. Tacoma Housing Authority does have a moving to work program. They're kind of unique in that regard. Uh, that's not applicable here. Uh, with the recent shooting incident, it's become, what you know, where through news reports, so we have. Single violent felon. Who's who has seen with a gun by a. A staff member in the prior year. Living there. Somebody who came from out of state. So we weren't helping somebody in Lakewood. We weren't helping a family. We were contributing to endangering. The families that live there by not having. Process in place for the safety of those families. There's going to be, as I mentioned earlier, a COVID wall. Uh, there's literally billions of dollars going into housing all over the country. One time money. Beefing everything up and there is nothing. On the horizon to sustain that volume of additional ha- housing. So you would expect. That instead of saying just how much money they want for this, we have some program for us. That says, here's how we're going to sustain this. Uh, we have committed funds of X, Y, Z. We expect that our share of. The ongoing funds in the county will be Z. Because we have to compete with these other people. We can't get more than our, everybody's going to say, well, we've got vouchers. Well, there are only so many vouchers and they get invited up. Everybody's going to say, well, there's housing money that passes through the county from the state. Yes. But it's going to be divided up. What's your share? I I looked at the website and the tax returns. It appears that uh, it costs them about twenty five thousand dollars a year. Of operating budget for each unit they have. Uh, it's hard to tell because the annual report doesn't have any numbers in it, doesn't say how many people were served, doesn't say what their budget is, doesn't say what there's. Their uh, the amount of income that came in doesn't say what their expenses were. An annual report online with no budget. Uh, well, good intentions pave roads to perdition. But. We have to be stewards of the. Funds of the taxpayers and. Especially when we're paying twice market. For units. You can look all over the county and get apartment buildings for three hundred thousand or less per unit. Uh, six hundred thousand. You want to house homeless people, you don't build it twice as expensive over a two year period. You buy something. That is more affordable and you put people. Um, that's a totally different policy issue, but I I can't tell if this can be sustained. I I have no faith that people are going to be safe there without seeing the program, how the program is going to change. Uh, so that. A violent felon who's seen walking around with a gun that came in from out of state and a single person isn't there. In a unit that we funded or help fund. For families in need. Uh, there definitely is a need. I I'm just, I can be convinced. But if I had to vote tonight, I'd say no. So I want to see those hard number budgets. Why those things are attainable, not just to hope, because hope isn't a plan. What could possibly be done to bring down a six hundred thousand dollar a unit cost? You can buy a pretty nice house in Pierce County for six hundred thousand dollars. It's well above the average price of the house in Lakewood right now. And and I know why it's expensive, because it's government red tape and prevailing wage and extra costs of. Extra appraisals and all sorts of bureaucrats that have to look it over. Um, but doesn't make a right. So um, I think we need to kick this down and and get the answers to some more questions and and. Move it beyond next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I too agree with Councilmember Anderson and Councilman DeBrand, stated that there is a need for this. I do believe that. But I do have a lot of questions and with the new executive director coming in, that would be something that I would love to hear from him. What is his plan? Where is he going with this? So this would be something that I would like to see. Um, and you know, and I'm very aware of the felon that was there. My daughter got a text from her friend who lives nearby, so that this happened. This was not. The what Lhasa was supposed to house there, what was supposed to be there. So that's very disheartening for me. And um, I just would like to look at this a little bit more and I too would not be ready to move this forward right now. Thank you.
Yeah, I I would, I would agree with Mayor Anderson, but for several different reasons and and Councilmember Bill. Ex-mayor, sorry. Councilmember Anderson. Was a faux pas and was bad. First of all, the mayor's not here and I think he has s- some concerns. He's expressed some concerns to me. And I think they're along the same lines as Councilmember Bill. I'd also like to wait for the state to make sure that they've actually committed the dollars. There's two different versions. There now is my understanding, actually in the process of deciding how they're going to do that. That portion, the actual direct allocation, but also the understanding, the allocation that they're going to do in the capital budget for housing in general. And if there's going to be other funding. They're still talking about perhaps governor is governor going forward with Governor Inslee's proposal for four billion dollars for housing. It'd have to be voted on by the voters. Um, so I do, I do want to wait for the state. I I am a little bit concerned. I'm more than a little bit concerned, actually, I I although I appreciate. That there are hometown folks and and appreciate the work they've done of of. Of taking this two million dollars and 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 how, excuse me, the. Yeah, two million dollars in housing dollars and and putting it all on one project. And then we're, we're zeroed out. We've we've kind of prided ourselves on doing some pretty, I think, pretty innovative things um. As a city, when it comes to housing, uh, with up the with uh, the. The habitat stuff and and a lot of the of the renewal of of housing in the area. And Mr. Gum's crew has has done a really good job with that. So those are my three reasons why. To push off the vote to s- to some later time. Let's, let's see what the legislature finalizes. Let's get the mayor back here so he he can get his his concerns answered. And I and I and I still, you know, although I appreciate the the um. The the answers you gave tonight, Mr. Gum, that. What we might be giving up, you know, what's our, what's our uh, opportunity cost? So for that reason, I would, I would ask that we postpone it.
Uh, I agree with my fellow council members on that. Uh, specifically, Councilmember Anderson said about the annual report and understanding the financials behind everything. Like to see that uh, as well as processes and tools for screening uh, and understanding that better before I was ready to move on. Thank you.
Well, I will, Mr. President, if you have comment, I will, I will add to that. I I agree with uh, what has been said. Because we need to know exactly what the plans are and at this point. It's uh, it's not really known. I would like to see the new director explain. The process and the direction that he wants to take this. Think that would be helpful to us. So I would, I would not be uh, in favor of passing this on another next week. Any other comments, questions? So, thank you. You did your job. Next on our agenda is the um. Update of a City Hall Utility Memorandum. And for that, we call them Superintendent Scott Williams and Mary.
Quick test on this. Okay, there, it is working. Okay. Uh, good evening, Deputy Mayor Moss and esteemed council members. I'm here tonight to present the recommendations for energy consumption improvements to City Hall based on the investment grade audit. That uh, council authorized last year. City Hall is a twenty two year old building with original equipment and is reaching its useful life. As our team was putting together options for modernizing the equipment, we learned that the state had passed clean building legislation. That would impact our decisions. Rather than continuing down an unknown path alone, we reached out to the Department of Commerce for assistance. And partnered with a state approved vendor for completing the I G A. It just so happened that the approved vendor was also already working with us as our HVAC contractor. Over the past year, McDonald Miller conducted the I G A and has provided the city with a proposal. To replace the components in our building systems that will mu- uh, be more energy efficient. Provide annual cost savings and meet the clean buildings legislation by the deadline of June first, two thousand twenty eight. This presentation will review the benchmarks, project phasing, funding and next steps. For reference, on page twenty eight of your packet, uh, you have a list of acronyms and definitions. Um, I'll be using some shorter three letter terms. Uh, so. All right, uh, so the investment grade audit identified benchmarks highlighted uh, with the red box. For our current energy use. Of seventy three point seven by monitoring equipment, schedules, energy consumption and a host of other factors. This information was used to establish the baseline E U I, which is our energy use intensity. While benchmarking was taking place, at the same time. Oops, it's the wrong button. There we go. Uh, while benchmarking was taking place, at the same time, we were able to compile and provide the information needed uh, by McDonald Miller. To input into the Department of Commerce matrix to identify the target E U I. Some examples of their matrix are the climate zone, the county activity use and some square footage. They then assign a formula to come up with the target E U I, which is the fifty four point six. The difference between the target uh, E U I and the baseline E U I. Is the gap that we need to close to achieve our compliance. Uh, that gap is nineteen point one. For reference, this table uh, and chart represents the last four years of energy consumption at City Hall. And uh, Tacoma Power is our electric provider and P S C is our gas provider. So this is the overall scope of the project. The following pages follow the same format. So let's get familiar with what we're looking at. In the upper right corner, you'll see the baseline, the target and the E U I reduction. There is a full list of the energy conservation major, measures for the E C Ms. The green box represents achieving compliance. The lines following the E C Ms represent the cost from the E S C O, which is the Energy Service Company. Sales tax, state administrative fees. Which gets us to the total cost of the project in today's dollars, a little over five and a half million. Phase one, so the green highlighted uh, E C Ms are the proposed scope for this phase. They will replace the low efficiency boilers, add two electric vehicle chargers in the basement. Convert all lighting to L E D and add lighting controls to turn on and off lights automatically. Lastly, it will modernize our existing controls to reduce the energy waste. The critical component to phase one is to get the engineering completed and permits submitted for the boiler replacement prior to the end of June. As the building code changes July first. Phase two. The crossed out lines on this page represent the completed items in phase one. Again, the green highlighted E C Ms are what's proposed in this phase. This will replace the chiller units to provide more efficient air conditioning in the building. It will change our constant control ventilation to demand control. Provide more efficient movement of air in in the building. The interior air handler, air handling units will get replaced and variable ionization will be installed. To improve interior air quality. So an example of the the uh, demand control versus the constant control is in this room. You hear and feel the air movement all the time. Uh, the new system will have better controls for us. So phase three, this is the last proposed phase and it replaces the rooftop air handling units. With modern units and provides new exterior ductwork. So the culmination of completing this project will not only bring the city into compliance with the clean building legislation. But it will also provide an annual energy consumption savings that translates into a cost savings. There are also one time incentives offered by the utilities and the state to assist in the implementation of the project. By phasing the project, the cost of. By phasing the project, the cost of, for completion is spread over three biennial budgets. In the current budget, there's eight hundred and eighty-five budgeted, leaving a need for an additional nine hundred and twenty-one, five sixty-six. Staff is recommending that five hundred thousand of additional ARPA money be added to this project and the remaining four twenty-one, five sixty-six come from the carryforward general fund. Subsequent phases will be funded through the biennial budget process for those respective years. Following council's thoughtful consideration of this project proposal, at the next council meeting, an amendment to the existing IGA contract will be brought forward for consideration so that McDonald Miller can start the engineering and design for the boiler replacement permits that need to be turned in prior to June thirtieth. Following that, the remainder of the twenty twenty-three budget adjustment for phase one of this project will be included in the carryforward review and discussion on April twenty-fourth. Thank you for your time and consideration of this project that will modernize the HVAC and lighting systems. We all depend on City Hall to conduct the public's business. Questions?
Any questions? Mr. Bobbi.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. So page thirty-nine of our packet, that, yeah, right there. Thank you. Um, the, the one-time incentives because, uh, so there's estimated annual cost savings of twenty-three thousand, which on a five million dollar investment doesn't seem like a whole heck of a lot. And then the utility rebate, which is one time, and then the state early adopter. What is the state early? So in total, that's a little over two hundred thousand on this five million dollar project. Uh, but what's the state early adopter?
So the early adopter incentive is, uh, it's a calculation they came up with based on the square footage of the facility. And it's, uh, roughly about eighty-five cents per square foot is what they allow. There has been, uh, discussion, I, I don't know at the legislative level where it's at, but there's been discussion to, uh, increase that amount because this isn't just public buildings. This is every building over fifty thousand square feet in the state of Washington.
Wow.
And we jumped on.
My house is just underneath that, so I won't have to do that. Um. Any availability? Did you investigate any availability at all through the Inflation Reduction Act? And we, we hear there's, there's all these green incentives and everything at the federal level?
I had not looked at. We can look into that for you.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Anderson.
Can you simplify for me what the advantage, the dollar advantage is for moving sooner and what timeline is? So there's early adopter. I suspect at some point you aren't early anymore.
Right.
And maybe there are some other criteria that I don't quite understand in there, but, um, could you summarize for us what, when we'd have to, when we have to boot to take advantage of how much of a discount, I guess, is what the question is?
Applications for the early adopter incentives opened in July of twenty twenty-two. Um, and so the money is there until it's not. There's a, there's a pot of money for everybody to apply for.
And that's how much of the, some of this is energy savings. That's, that's just a subsidy. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's eighty-five cents per square foot.
And I think, um, part of that question was why now? I mean, what, what's the timeframe now? So maybe clarify that July deadline again regarding the, um, code changes and we missed that.
Yeah. So there's, there's, uh, two different deadlines we're, we're working with. The clean buildings legislation requires that, that the buildings, uh, over fifty thousand square feet are in compliance by, uh, June first of, of two thousand twenty-eight. The second deadline that we're also working with doesn't have to do with the clean buildings legislation. It has to do with the International Building Code is changing July first of, of two thousand twenty-three. So the, the boiler replacement, uh, that we're recommending is based on our ability to get the permits, uh, in before the deadline so that we can go with this option.
Which becomes more expensive if you don't pass, is that right?
Correct. If we, if we don't meet the deadline, the next option is significantly more.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Okay. Just as a piece of background on this. The energy use intensity. What really is that? And that's a goal we're trying to meet. They said you got to change your energy use intensity. And I'm trying to understand, what is it that we've got to reduce by nineteen percent or?
Points is, yeah, nineteen point one.
I mean, it isn't, it isn't, it isn't cost. It's something else.
So the, think of it like your Energy Star rating on your, your appliances at home. The higher the rating, the more efficient your, your appliances. They're, they're adopting the same kind of mentality in trying to get, uh, the buildings to use less energy, uh, in, in, in our state. And so that this is, I don't know the formula, how they came up with it, you know, at, at the Department of Commerce, uh, but these are the numbers that they used to input and then give us the, our target number of fifty-four point six based on the county we're in, our square footage, our climate zone and several other factors. How we use the building, uh, the, the square footage is identified differently and is, and has different points based on how the building is used. And that's how they come up with the fifty-four point six. The seventy-three point seven number that, that is our baseline is, that's the, the IGA, the investment grade audit that McDonald Miller conducted over the last year. They took into consideration all these different factors of, of what we use the building for, how much energy we're using it. They're looking at our, our consumption, um, and we put that into the Energy Star, uh, website that, that we operate. And that kind of does the math and spits the number out of what our current, uh, baseline number is. And now they, they did have to stop at, uh, that they're using the two thousand twenty-one, uh, number. Let's see it up there. Um, they're using the, the two thousand twenty-one because that's where they, they then move forward for the, for the next year and doing their study. Uh, so, so that's, we're using the seventy-three point seven is the baseline and then the, um, the fifty-four point six is our target that, that we're required to get to by two thousand twenty-eight.
The numbers, the, 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 the numbers there that are the, the target, what's the consequence of not meeting the target?
There is a penalty built in to the, uh, clean buildings legislation, uh, that if a building doesn't meet that, there are financial penalties.
So. For, for reasons of cost savings, we would like to replace our boilers with new gas boilers.
High-efficiency gas boilers, yes.
Okay. And in the clean energy world, that's a, a higher intensity use than if we converted to electric. You know, it would cost us more to do electric that, that, that we're, we're, we're not reducing our EUI by as much by making in the first phase continuing to use gas.
I can, I can go back and I can pull that number out for you. Uh, it's not going to be significantly more as far as the, the EUI reduction. The, the target will remain the same and our baseline i- is what it is, uh, the seventy-three point seven. How we achieve that i- is going to be different based on the, um, the ECMs that we implement and whether we get to the goal of, of getting the permits in to get the, the high-efficiency gas boilers. We can pull that, that table up and provide it to you, uh, to, to show you the difference of what the, the next option would be.
Okay. And you said that the, the bright line of June thirtieth, okay, of having a permit in hand, okay? Is the, the work to get that permitted all done in-house? I mean, we're talking about a permit we're going to issue to ourselves.
The city processes the building permits, correct? We would have a consultant.
So there's, there's not a, an element of the permit that has to go somewhere else because of all the environmental things that are out there?
This, this would be a building and mechanical permits issued by the city of Lakewood.
Okay. And as long as you meet the goal by twenty twenty-eight, then how long are you good for?
So following, getting all of the equipment up to speed and, and doing, uh, our, our benchmarking to make sure we met that goal. And, and part of the, the requirement from McDonald Miller is they have to guarantee that we will meet these goals through this, the state contract, through the Department of Commerce. Uh, that, that's how it, it works. They have to guarantee those goals will be reached, uh, to the Department of Commerce. And then, and then that's how we move forward. Following that, the, um, can, can you repeat what you said?
Well, if we meet the goal in twenty twenty-eight, that how long are we good for? Or are they going to say, now here's the twenty thirty goal? I, I, I mean, to be able to
So there's.
Go and do that where, where, where we won't be able to use gas boilers and.
So there's annual reporting, uh, that's part of the legislation that will be required to submit, uh, to make sure we're still in compliance.
Okay. And then given the, uh, the, uh, you allocated the floor space in the building to different categories up there and that's fine. That concurrently, we're working on looking at reallocate the floor space. To some of it being not, no longer used by the city if that plan is approved, but it's being studied to be able to go and do that. If some of it is not being used for governance, uh, in, in, or, or is being used by a non-public entity, um, does that change any of the calculations or the requirements in either of the two pieces of legislation we're scrambling to comply with?
There's a potential of, of that. The, the majority of the building is, is office space for government use. This, this room here is classified differently. The courts are classified and, and, and the holding cells are, are classified differently. So you're, you're talking a, a percentage of the office space, uh, that, that could potentially change in their calculation. I, I would have to find that out for you.
Yeah. Well, you know, uh, certainly the plan that you propose um, makes fiscal sense to me, to, of, 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 of something to do. It's probably the the most fiscally responsible way to get from here to there as we understand where there is. Uh, that, um, you know, I, I, I would just like to be able to get there and then have a set of systems that have a, a twenty-year life. And are we replacing things with things that expect to have a twenty-year life?
Absolutely. Yeah. They, they follow the ASHRAE, um, which is the, uh, it's the mechanical world or engineering world term for the life expectancy for your pieces of equipment. And that, that is information that we do have, uh, for the equipment that's recommended to go in. Uh, I just don't have that on this presentation.
Okay. And the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the property management account that we have, that we have money we've been putting aside to eventually have to do, to do this. That, uh, but in the twenty twenty-five and twenty-six and the twenty-seven, twenty-eight, are, are we using up all that money in twenty-three, twenty-four? So we don't have property management money? Or is that just to be determined in the budgeting process, whether there's property management money that can be used for, for those years' costs?
Yes, that'll be looked at during the process of, of building the budgets. But we are looking at using the current funds on phase one.
Thank you.
And other questions, discussions? Councilmember, that's my thought.
Thank you. Uh, thank you Superintendent Williams for coming to speak with us. Uh, I appreciate that this is broken down into phases and that's a great way to approach it. Uh, but I did note that it looks like we achieved the EUI target in phases one and two. And that only, looks like that spends about half of the total cost. Uh, are there opportunities to reduce the cost in phase three, being that it doesn't get us over the finish line because we're already there?
Yeah. So the, the, we do get to the finish line in phase two, but we also have to remember that it's the, the equipment that's on the roof is twenty years old, twenty plus years old and will be even older at that time. Uh, and so the, the life expectancy, uh, useful life, uh, we will be well past that.
Right. So there's a, a different push for that independent of this specific EUI target. Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So moving on, you can see what's scheduled for April seventeenth regular meeting. And with that, uh, Mr. Caulfield, I think, uh, the, my colleagues have suggested that we remove approval of the allocation of the funds next week to be further discussed. Thank you. So other than that, we'll have a report by our city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Good evening Deputy Mayor, council members. Got a handful of updates for you this evening. Um, first, uh, just kind of some admin updates. So your next regular meeting next, uh, Monday evening as a follow-up from last week, uh, the council, um, you said you'd all be in your Easter best for a council picture at six thirty um, in this, in this location. And hopefully that still works for everybody. So again, six thirty-ish. Good. Okay. Um, also, um, I know we had a discussion last week about the AWC Annual Conference. And even though the conference kicks off on Tuesday, uh, this, this body will have a city council meeting that day because the preceding Monday, June nineteenth, is, um, a new holiday for the city. It's Juneteenth. So just a friendly reminder on that. Um, also, given that, uh, the mayor, the deputy mayor and a council member are going to be um, visiting Gimhee in the Republic of Korea for our sister city. It's recommended that this body cancel your May eighth study session. And, um, unless there's any objection from the council, deputy mayor would like to put that on your next regular meeting agenda to get that done. Um, also, um, your, uh, next regular meeting under reports by the city manager, uh, you'll get an update on the status of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library for here in Lakewood. Uh, the Rotary Club of Lakewood is actually taking the lead on that. And, uh, they have asked the city to partner, including providing some financing. And, uh, long story short, uh, based on the work that they have done, uh, working directly with the Imagination Library folks, um, the requested contribution from the city council is fifty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, those dollars would be used, um, really in the front years because the recommendation is to use ARPA funds um, in the first three years to, uh, get the program going. Um, the, um, Dolly Parton, uh, Imagination Library folks estimate that, uh, the program would ultimately grow to serving four thousand children here in Lakewood across several zip codes by year five, which would be about two thousand, the two thousand twenty-seven, two By year five, which would be about two thousand, the two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight time period. So it would start off with eight hundred children, um, late beginning later this year, uh, double to sixteen hundred, twenty-four hundred. Thirty-two hundred and four thousand. Again, that's based on their data and their analysis. Um, overall, the cost over that five-year period to provide this program would actually be over three hundred thousand dollars. However, fifty percent of it would be provided by the Office of uh Superintendent for Public Instruction, OSPI, hundred and fifty thousand. The balance of a hundred and fifty thousand would be provided by uh the City of Lakewood and the Lakewood Rotary Club. So the city would be contributing again that fifty-six thousand eight thirty-three and then the Rotary Club of Lakewood would then be doing fundraising in the out years. Actually, they've already started doing fundraising um to uh fund the balance of that. So. Um, again, just wanted to give you a heads up that that's something that's going to be coming forward for your review at your next um, your next your your next study session. Um, our city attorney continues um to serve as a lead representing not just the city of Lakewood, but a number of other cities and. Working partnership with Pierce County uh to develop the opioid abatement council, ILA, the inter-local agreement forming that. Um, in summary, she expects to be back in front of this body um on uh May fifteenth, um, followed by if the council so inclined. For consideration to adopt a I an ILA considering that or creating that on as part of your June fifth meeting. Um, the focus, um, as the city attorney has explained to me, is to keep it really, really simple. The focus of the OAC is solely to account for the money. It's essentially serving as the. As the keeper of records, if you will. What the OAC is not responsible for. Is the allocation of the funds in the policy direction of where those dollars go to. That result that resides with each respective legislative body that is a subject to the lawsuit, which includes all of you folks right here. So again, the city attorney, she's working very collaboratively with a handful of folks to um get this done and um get that in front of you um. Here in the next um month, month, month or so.
Mr. Boca has a question.
Thank you for the update on that. Um, John. How 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 many settlements will there be? Or are we thinking there's going to be? How many have already settled and do they all go into this?
So the latter part of your question is yes, and uh I think I think there's uh, is it four or five? Pharmaceutical companies or companies that distribute um these particular opioids, city attorney?
Um, yes, Mr. City Manager and um Acting Mayor Moss and members of the council, the um. Opioid defendants include distributors, processors, retailers. And so you're going to see this dribble in as each group settles. The most recent settlement that you're getting is from retailers. It's um Walmart, I think, and Walgreens and. Um, a couple others. And so that's how it's going to come in until they're fully and finally done. You may or may not remember at the very beginning of this, one of the things we talked about was with all of the different litigation going on all over the country. The reason this got centered at the federal court in Ohio that it went to is because that particular judge. Has a little bit of a reputation for sort of herding the cats. Getting all of these various pieces of litigation and looking at the parties and saying you need to figure out how you're going to settle this. Um, he's not really interested in anyone going to trial and that's not to say people don't have a right to go to trial, but when you have that much going on, it's just easier to have everybody. Resolve it. And in answer to your um specific question about um. You know, how this is going to come through in terms of agreements, each time there's a settlement. They can try to replicate what's already been done in terms of distribution through the states and the cities and they definitely want to do something like that. Because it allows them to say we've dealt with everyone, but we you will see one of those agreements come through you each time, probably. Is my expectation. To to as near as I can be certain of that, it seems like the smoothest path so far that we've seen. We haven't seen anybody trying to do something drastically different.
So the, so I think the first one was like a seventeen-year payout or something like that. So you're anticipating that they'll all be kind of on that. Track that it'll be an annual payout for some given period of time. The state will get a certain portion, will get a certain, the cities and counties will get a certain portion and. It'll be substantially on the same terms, right?
Councilmember Volkan, members of the council, yes, you should expect to see, and this isn't to say it's a guarantee. You should expect to see giant, giant number in the newspaper. And then you will see it distributed down through all of the various cities and counties throughout the. United States over a course of seventeen or like number of years. And then it looks more like sixty or eighty thousand dollars a year to us as a city. You should expect something on that order most of the time.
Thank you.
As we look out two weeks to your next study session, uh, our deputy city manager will be in front of you to present. Um, the year-end financial report. I just wanted to give you a real quick snapshot on that. Um, in summary, the city's finances have actually never been stronger. I know I said that in two thousand twenty-one, they actually got better in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, general fund revenues across the board did exceed, generally speaking, um, expectations. Exception exceptions whereas um development services fees fees, we saw a little bit of a slowdown there. As well as fines and forfeitures, but that's what happens when uh the state legislature puts laws into place that prohibits. You from pulling people over and issuing traffic citations and other public safety things such as that. Um, likewise, on the other side of the income statement, um, operating expenditures uh came in just a little bit under what we had anticipated spending. So. The net gain of that has resulted in again, um, even a stronger fund balance than that 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 we had anticipated. Of course, that all translates into one-time monies that'll be available for one-time purposes and. I know over the last few months or so, um, we have given you some updates and some ideas on. Uh, we would like to recommend that those monies be invested. Um, though please note, um, we we can only spend it once. So just want to give you a courtesy heads up on that. Um, of course, our two biggest items are actually the. The 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 financing that we need in support of Wars Lake Park and American Lake Park. And I think it was back in March that the. Park and Rec Director gave you a heads up on that. Um, also, uh, just a reminder that, you know, the 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 strength of the city's finances does not happen by accident, just doesn't happen. Um, it's because of uh starts with um the mayor and the council and um your strong financial policies, of course, that we follow and. Our department directors and our employees who are day in and day out, very good, strong stewards of um the city's financial um resources. Um, we are beginning to see a little bit of a slowdown in things. Um, one of the areas that I'm really concerned about is in the area of sales tax, particularly retail trade. That dropped off by uh four hundred thousand dollars or six percent as compared to last year, but overall, sales tax did very, very well. Um, because of areas such as services and new construction and things on things along those lines. So those are some things that we're just going to have to keep an eye, keep keep an eye on. Um, um, also, uh, the city, we continue to partner with Pierce County. That would result um in the transfer of the Old Settler Cemetery, which is located on Washington Boulevard, totals about. Four and a quarter acres uh over to the city of Lakewood. Uh, we really appreciate the county actually taking a leadership role and. Actually doing all the work, um, including developing uh the necessary agreement uh that would be uh needed to um have both the council, I I. I'm presuming the Pierce County Council is going to have to take action on it, but I know this body would as well. Um, and we hope to be able to bring that forward to you here in the near future. Yeah, and there's a couple of reasons why. Um, this has been a priority for the council. Um, number one is that. It's 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 in the city and the county does a good job of maintaining it. They're out there two to three times a year. But really, the city, we can, I I believe we can do a better job of that. Um, but also with the recent improvements that are coming on Washington Boulevard, it's really going to put a shine on that area. And I think that's an opportunity to even do a little bit more um in 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 support of 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 the cemetery and. Um, maybe do a little bit something that's a little bit more respectful for the folks who are buried there and their families and things along those lines. So. Um, that'll be coming forward to this body here in the next few months um as well. Want to recognize the county for their for their assistance there. Um, the Pierce County Library System, not to be confused with Pierce County, because the Pierce County Library System, it's its own stand municipality with its own Board of Trustees. Um, they are, um, their Board of Trustees later this week, we understand, is going to be. Um, considering a contract to actually demolish the building on Wild Air. And uh, as you know, they've already made the decision to build an interim library at Alferata and Gravio Lake Drive, so that's moving forward on a paral- on a parallel track. Um, and then the next major step, again, I know I sound like a broken record here with these updates. Is for the board to consider where they wish to build a new permanent library. And how they want to undertake financing that, whether it's at the current location on Wild Air or somewhere else in the city. So more 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 to come, more to come on that. Um, and then, um, also, um, I I know that Councilmember Branstad are sitting on the South Sound nine-one-one board, we'll be seeing this. But um, all the cities and towns, including Tacoma, Lakewood, Puyallup, University Place, Bonnie Lake, Sumner, Ordings, Silicon, Buckley, Carbon. Carbonado and Wilkinson, um, we all launched um a code, the Code Red Program last year, which is an emergency. Um, management, uh, an emergency alert system that we can send out updates over phone, text, email. But we actually, the city of Lakewood, we use it mostly for um non-emergency purposes and it's proven to be very, very valuable. Um, and uh, last year, South Sound nine-one-one, given they're the keeper of everything that's communications within Pierce County. Um, actually paid for that for all of those cities and so the cities are going back, including Lakewood, to the South Sound nine-one-one folks. And asking for them to do that again in two thousand twenty-three. And uh, so the city's uh reimbursement of that will be um. Little over ten thousand six hundred, six hundred dollars. Um, as you look at your calendar, um, uh, the city clerk asked me to let you know that. I'm about to sneeze. Um, then on this Thursday, April thirteenth, uh, Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting, seven P M. Um, at the fires, at the at the uh fire station on Washington Boulevard is having their monthly meeting. However, there's no assigned city council member liaison because. That was a a hole, if you will, given the pending appointment of um the new council member, um. Councilman Laura Sella and uh, so if anybody's interested in attending that, um, seven P M. Thank you, councilmember. Um, on Saturday and Sunday, we will be having our uh spring uh community cleanup. And uh, we are looking for some volunteers. So if you're interested in volunteering and coming up and checking IDs or just. Helping out in any way that's needed, please uh let myself or this weekend. It's the, this is the fifteenth, yes, fifteenth and sixteenth. Yeah, it kind of sneaks up on you. So. Um, but if you're interested, um, let me know. We got some slots that we can. Put you into. Um, also, next Monday, um, and if you haven't had a chance to to. To attend these, there's some pretty cool artists that show up at the art receptions, um. That the city has been sponsoring and there was one in March and the next one is this coming Monday at five thirty right out front and several artists will be. Will be out there talking about um the great work um that 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 they do. And then the following week, April twenty-seventh. Twenty-second, rather, is the annual Parks Appreciation Day. And then um the following week after that, um, April twenty-sixth, there is the Lassa fundraising event in the morning over at the McGavick. Um, center and then uh the next day on, I think it's Thursday, the twenty-seventh. The Lakewood View, Lake, Lakeview Light and Power Corporation is going to be having their annual meeting right here in the city council chambers and. Yours truly will be giving a very abbreviated State of the City address. Um, and then um on Friday, April twenty-eighth at five thirty P M, the tip-off is at six P M. Fourteenth Annual Cops versus Teachers Charity Basketball Game over at Lakes High School. And if you haven't attended that, that's certainly a lot of fun to. To 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 watch that and certainly going for a for a for a for a good cause. Um, on the state um legislative front, so uh less than two weeks to go, thirteen days and 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 counting. Doesn't look like the state legislature will be extending. They'll be looking to get done on um, on uh Sunday, the twenty-third. And so, um, you know, the city continues to be actively engaged in a number of fronts, particularly in the area of the police pursuit bills. Um, drug possession related to the Blake decision, though now the legislature has added not just possessing a drug, which was. Kind of the whole, but also use of drugs, which this body just passed an ordinance. Um, so here's the deal, um, their bill only makes it a misdemeanor. Your bill has it as a gross misdemeanor, so you get uncert. Um, we have also been in contact with AWC on this and we've expressed our concerns on that. AWC and I. Thankfully are not supporting this bill, um, because the bill is way too burdensome the way it's written. And most importantly, there's not enough accountability. That's the feedback from the cities, including Lakewood. So we are passing, passing that along. Um, also, on the affordable housing front, um. You know, House Bill eleven-ten, the quote-unquote middle housing bill for cities of our population size, I I would say that's gotten a little better. Um, in that if it passes, that all residential lots. Would be required to have a minimum of two units per lot. Now, at one time, it was actually for cities over seventy-five thousand, it's four units per lot. For a city of our size right now would be two units per lot. However, if you're within a uh major, if you have a major transit facility, like we have Sounder Station, within a quarter mile, it's four units per lot. Well. Our sub-area plan already has that, so it's kind of a moot point. Um, but really, the big issue is that all residential lots would have to be. Two per, two units per lot. So just wanted to give you um a heads up on that. So um, those are kind of some of the, and and I know I gave you a money update last week, so I won't I won't reiterate myself. That's all still um moving forward. So. Again, almost to the end. So uh with that, Deputy Mayor, it's my my report.
Mr. Volker.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss. Um, John, just along those lines about in, you sent us, um. Our lobbyists. Um, go, they were, they did a synopsis of the various bills. So the word of the day, I had a word of the day earlier and it was much shorter, it was falling. Has to do with concrete falling apart. I'm not sure this is a word, but I I really do want you to, this is where our legislature is at right now, but maybe you can help me with the word bio. Psycho-social assessment. I don't, I don't think I could pass that.
So, so, so here's the deal. Um, I'm from Boston, you all hired me and. You know that anything more than two syllables, I get very confused.
Somebody, so that's, that's in part of that Blake thing.
I got nothing.
I I, I agree with the assessment. When I read, I read that, I was like, oh my goodness, it's so convoluted. The i- i- it would, it would just be lawyers arguing over. Um, whether or not all the guidelines, this for assessments, diversion. Immunity, service, various things that if it would just become a process battle. And I took it as the legislature really not wanting to pass something, feeling like they have to. And so they don't really, but they don't really want to, so they just have made it so convoluted that it can't work.
I I don't, I don't believe that's the state legislature's intent. I think they're trying to take everybody's feedback and suggestion into line and that's what you get. That's what you get. Though really, the simple solution is to make it a felony and move on. But that was something. That's water under the bridge. They're not going to do that.
Bio-psycho-social assessment. We'll ask our legislative delegation when we're here. I'm sure they'll all know. So, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Caulfield, on the the Old Settler Cemetery and its train ownership. Uh, transitioning to the city from the county. They know the 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 only other cemetery that I think that we own is located inside. What's Silicon Park and it's actually a historical site because it's not actively a cemetery. Whereas the Old Settler Cemetery actually occasionally has a burial in it. Um, is the, are we going to either adopt, have to adopt by reference or? Or 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 put something into the Lakewood Municipal Code about. Cemeteries and we have some other cemeteries in the. Um, in the uh, in the city, but you know, the 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 city, that's city property, but there's about five others. Uh, but are we, is there going to be some council action that'll be required based upon? Accepting that property, but also accepting that responsibility?
So Councilmember Branstad, those are some of the due diligence items we're going through, so to be determined.
Okay, uh, and on the Pierce County Library uh system and their uh. Building the temporary library, be able to go and do that? Are they being charged a transportation impact fee in in accordance with this? Downtown sub-area plan or are they asked to be exempted from that?
Uh, no, councilmember, they are um going to have to pay a transportation impact fee, but based on our code, they're actually going to get some of it back based on. Some other things that they're doing. So, um, but long story short, yes, they do have to comply with our code.
Okay, but they're not able to go back uh on what was on that property twenty years ago and get credit for the. The transportation that was there.
No, sir.
Okay, and then I I I guess I. Okay. And then I, I guess I, you, you understand, I appreciate the comments about, you know, the, the housing bill that's in the legislature, you know, the House Bill eleven ten. And it's and while it's less horrendous than it was originally introduced, which would have, you, you know, used parks and schools and things as places around in which there was increased density, it, it, it's still essentially vilifies single-family zoning and single-family neighborhoods as the, the problem for the housing crisis and where the solution has to come from. Despite the fact that most people who own single-family homes probably saved a long time for those down payments, chose the neighborhood specifically for its character. And in our vision, for our city, we, 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 we call out the nature, the character of our neighborhoods as being one of the things that we really wanted to both sustain and enhance, being able to go and do that. Up until this past week, the Association of Washington Cities was, was opposing the bill, basically because it wasn't, for some reasons, but also because it's meddling in things that should be local control. And this past week, they have decided that they will change their mind and they will be supporting the bill to be able to go and do that. And their explanation was that gives them time to work on other things with the legislature, and they, they don't want to look to do that. I'm really disappointed that they've taken all along that regard in, in terms of being able to go and do that. You know, I, I don't know. But it's a, it, it's one of those things that when it passes and when it becomes understood that essentially there are going to be duplexes or duplexes plus ADUs on, on proliferating around in the, in the neighborhoods, we're going to get some feedback from the community as those things start to happen. And we, we're going to have to take a look at exactly what the final result is. You know, unfortunately, the hopeful result that the, the whole thing self-destructs is probably not going to happen. But, you know, we, we're going to have to be prepared to to listening and then developing a strategy for how we look to, to implement that in with as, as much local control as it will continue to allow us to, to have, to be able to go and do that. Anyway, but thanks for mentioning it, Mr. City Manager.
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, I skipped over an item. I just, as a follow up from last week, we did. I know the council talked about bringing back the non-motorized transportation plan. And fortunately, June twenty six doesn't work for some of our personnel, but we are able to bring it back to your next study session, which is two weeks from, from today. So we'll have that for you. And then just a real quick question, Deputy Mayor, and I just want to make sure that I'm on the right track here. As, as it relates to the last item, the energy audit, you know, the recommendation is to fill that, you know, that financing need with a combination of ARPA funds and one-time general government monies. I just want to make sure the council was comfortable with me recommending the use of the ARPA funds of, to the total of five hundred thousand dollars. We do have one point seven eight million that's available. So, you know, I was trying to, you know, find some balance there, but certainly we could fund all of it with ARPA funds. But right now, my recommendation is five hundred thousand, but I just wanted to make sure that the council is at least okay with that moving forward as a recommendation.
Do we have our agreement, Brad?
That, that wouldn't preclude the council from using ARPA funds in a subsequent budget on this for the same purpose, would it? Because it still could be.
I, I think the timing would be too tight to use it, you know, are you talking about for twenty five, twenty six?
Well, we're at least for obligated in twenty four.
Oh, actually, yes. So act- actually, yes, Councilmember, I stand corrected. Yes, you could, if you wanted to obligate a portion for the, the, the phase two as well, yes, you could, you could do that. So, but the reason I bring it up as well is, you know, the five hundred thousand dollars is, again, I was trying to be, you know, reasonable and not use it all up. But at the same time, you know, you got to find balance with protecting your general fund. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. We are in agreement. Before you leave, you mentioned the, of the library. If they demolish that building, I was turning my mic off.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. If you, if they demolish the old building and rebuild, even if they rebuild there, what will they do with the temporary or interim building?
So, so Deputy Mayor, that's a great question. You know, one of the ideas could be is they could use that to relocate that down to Silicon to be a, you know, a Silicon library. Because, I mean, it's going to be seventy five hundred, eight thousand square feet. So they could certainly use that elsewhere in the city, whether it's Silicon or someplace else.
Do we know anything more on the senior center? Where would, where would that go?
So, so, yes, Deputy Mayor, so if, if the Board of Trustees decides to build, you know, a more permanent library at their current location on Wild Air, that site is not large enough to accommodate a senior community center. However, this body's vision is to have that light, that permanent library built somewhere in the downtown. And that it include some kind of a community senior center. So, but right now, that's in the hands of their board, and they're trying to balance which direction to go or which options to look at. They haven't gotten it far yet.
Thank you. Councilmember LaRocella.
We'll get there. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. On the library subject, you mentioned there's a Board of Trustees meeting in the next week or so. Do you know if that's open to the public?
Yes, Councilmember, it is. I believe it's on Wednesday. I want to say three o'clock.
Okay.
So, three PM, yes. And there, and it's at their main administration building, which is on, on, on one twelve. So if you just get on one twelve in Parkland and at East, I'm not quite sure what the cross street is, but it's, 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 it's about, probably about a fifteen minute drive from here.
Okay, I'll look it up. Thank you. And then you mentioned approval of the city hall utility piece in next week's session. Or, okay, is that to approve phase one or the entirety of the plan?
No, Councilmember, just phase one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Thank you very much. But then we will go into council comments, and I'll start with Councilmember Volke.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just one comment to shape executive board meeting. They approved the advisory board, the nineteen, nineteen member advisory board. Louis Pritchard is, is probably the, the local person that most of us would know is from Lakewood. Councilmember Branstad attended the meeting prior to that, where they had some discussion about, about the board itself and the makeup of the board. So that's just another step forward on this. And then Councilmember Ryan Mello from the County Council had a discussion about the new sales, housing sales tax that was passed, that they're expecting they'll start to receive funds in September. So that's it for me.
Mr. President.
Deputy Mayor, I actually, because it popped up in my inbox, I, I, I took the, the tourism survey that they may have sent, you know, that, that Pierce County folks are looking to go and do to figure out how robust is the tourism industry or what can we do? And, and they asked for the perspective of a lot of people. So, so that I, that, that I took that. It's, it's asks a lot of questions that I don't got a good frame of reference on, okay? You know, in, 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 in terms of, 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 of what they are, but it, it, it didn't take too long. But if it shows up in your box, it, it's interesting, interesting insight into how people who are in the tourism business think about what's, as to what's important in terms of what they, yes, here, let me go and do that. I also attended the Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting to be able to go and do that. One thing that they did is that they have had on hold the survey of businesses that, that we had asked them to do some time ago. But that they had done some work on, but had begun to implement because they wanted to get the input from Chief Smith about what he would like to maybe see and learn from businesses to do that. And they've got a subcommittee that's going to meet with him to finalize the survey. And hopefully then this summer, do some survey of some of the business sectors here in the community to be able to, to go forward in doing all that. That, and they also re-expressed their interest in rail crossing safety. A couple of catalysts for that is that one that they were hoping to have seen some kind of activity about improvements at the Clover Creek rail crossing, you know, where there's no pedestrian ADA ability to cross that other than the roadway. And then two, there's just been a lot of publicity lately around, which I think is maybe not more, rail der- train, train derailments around the country. But they've been getting more, more press, at least every time there is one, they, it, it, it gets announced. Although, you know, the Burlington Northern and Santa Fe people say, you know, the frequency of incidents of, of, of freight derailments is stayed pretty, pretty much the same. It's pretty flat. There, there, there are always minor ones or a few ones being able to go and do that. But the recent fact that there were some that really had some hazardous things to do that. And I know Councilmember Anderson and I went to a thing at FEMA where we wondered whether there's going to be a derailment nearby here with the toxic things to be able to go and do that. And I think we're pretty well, but anyway, they, they, they asked if, if, for, for, for the presentation on, 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 on rail safety at their meeting in, in, in June. They meet every two months. So we'll, we'll look at, at, at going to that. And so that, that's really all I have, man.
Councilmember LaRocella.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I wanted to express my appreciation to each of the speakers who came in tonight. Chief Smith, Jeff Gumm, and Superintendent Williams, they were very open with what they were discussing, even when we were not necessarily in agreement with the forward progress on some of the things. And I look forward to meeting the new Executive Director for Lassa as they come into a future council meeting. I also attended the Public Safety Advisory Board. Thank you for inviting me, Councilmember Branstad. And I, I really did appreciate the focus on rail safety as well, as I grew up right there along the tracks. I know things have changed as more and more, more and more trains are going through that area. And I want to make sure that we're safe for all of our residents along that path. So, thank you.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I am good. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Well, it's, it's always good to be back after a couple of weeks out of the country. But I wasn't ignoring my new municipal duties. I did some investigation. This does relate to municipal government. So we hired a private guide in Casablanca, Morocco, its largest city, and had a variety of just cultural and historic and scenic discussions. This gentleman was highly educated and curious about us as much as I was curious about them. He informed me that there are two ways to make it economically where he lives. Well, one is to have your own company, and the other one is to be an official in government. And the way the officials in government, you know, they don't get paid that much. He says, well, they buy property and then they change what you can build there, and then they sell it. So they become very wealthy. And I said, geez, I'm a government official. And if I did that, I'd go to prison. And he was dumbfounded. And he started inquiring, whoa, what, how's it working in, in America? Really? You can't do that? It was, it was, yeah, maybe you could at some time, a point in time, but certainly not now and certainly not in the state of Washington. But, but that was pretty interesting. So, and not a, not recommending a change.
Thank you. Well, I, I will be brief. I did take a walk in the park on Saturday, and there were Easter eggs hidden around throughout the park in the little baggies. And we were afraid to touch them at first when we saw the first one, but there was messages in each egg. So it was just, it was very appealing, actually. They're really nice. And compliments of the, that I received walking the park was that they appreciate the fact that the way that the city has landscaped the area around City Hall. So I wanted to pass that on. And to you, Councilmember LaRocella. One of the things that we pride ourselves in is agree to disagree, but do what's best for our community. So I appreciate your comment tonight. So.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned.